It's been a month and this doc called me doing what?
It's five o'clock PM on Tuesday, July 20th, 2021. I call this workshop with Keenland, Pennsylvania for work. This time we have Will Calvo, Mr. Brian Cooper. Mr. Steven Craig. Mr. David R. Garcia. Mr. David R. Garcia. Mr. Elizabeth Ramos. Mr. James Lucy. Mr. James Lucy. Mr. Delmo Salinas. And Mr. Garsa, Garsa is present. Let the record show there's a quorum of board members present and this workshop has been posted in accordance with Government Code Chapter 551, State of Texas Open Meetings Act. This workshop will also be live video streamed at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash V I T period L Y forward slash three S R O L Q R. Do you have any public participation?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Pettis. This time we'll go ahead and move into the workshop, Dr. Peters.
To begin, Dr. Pitts is going to start us off with the repeat R S P.
Good evening, Board President Garcia, Superintendent, Dr. Peters, members of the board. We have several of our buildings that are leaking currently. That we have a couple of buildings at H M King, a little spot at Gillette, Pettis, and Harvey as well as at the maintenance shop. We are bringing to you a plan to get our roofs immediately repaired for the leaks and then a long-term plan to get them back under warranty so that we don't get in this situation again. Four of the five roofs at our campuses are under Garland. They use all Garland products and we have brought together our representative from the Garland Company to discuss both a short-term plan phase one to fix the leaks on our buildings and then a long-term phase two plan to get all the buildings under warranty so that we don't have future leaks. My pleasure, introduce Mike Trujillo for the Garland.
Can I stop you before you finish?
You're R P, correct?
Sorry, he said not R P.
We have not yet, so this is kind of the beginning of the process. Mr. Trujillo is going to discuss the best options for us to.
Why don't we go with Garland?
Well, we are close to our Garland.
We shouldn't write the thirty years?
Good, we'll make sure. Thank you, sir. First off, thank you all for having me here today. Dr. Pitts and myself have been working together for the last three months trying to come up with the best possible way to tackle these issues that you're having with the roofs as far as everything from leaks all the way to the warranties that you should have on the roofs. It, it, it's pretty evident you guys had issues for twice this time now. So my name is Mike Trujillo, I'm on the Gold Coast, Director of Management for the Garland Company. The Garland Company is one of the largest roofing manufacturers in the United States. Been around for, I mean, there's roofs in the valley that are thirty-four years old. Valley all the way across, so. They're United States, UK, and, and they've been in business since eighteen ninety-five. Just wanted to throw that in there so that you know that we're a solid company and we're here to support you and get you back in line with the roofs. Now, majority of the roofs you have were installed all the way back to two thousand four, so I've kind of gone back to our archives, two thousand four, two thousand five, two thousand six, eight, eleven, sixteen. And this is just, you, there's approximately fifteen, twenty roofs, you guys had some changes since then, you've had new buildings installed. So our goal was to go determine what roofs are, you know, part of that warranty process. Just kind of run down on the warranties and the issues that we've had real quick before we go into why, you know, what the next steps are. So, the manufacturer requires a maintenance record. They require a plan in place to continue the warranty. From assessing all the roofs, a majority of the roofs, a lot of these roofs haven't been maintained, there's no record in place. Roofs were cut into, just a lot of things that, that void warranties. Our goal is to not just void these warranties because some of these roofs are only ten, twelve years old and we shouldn't be in the situation that we are. So every five years it requires a manufacturer to come out, assess these roofs, determine what the best solution may be, just copying. There should be an annual maintenance plan in place for each one of these roofs, which we could not find either. So all these kind of violate warranties, but again, we want to try to, we don't want to just abandon these roofs because to replace all of these roofs is three times the amount of what it's going to cost to get those back under warranty. So the first phase that we discussed was just repairing, getting all these leaks in control that you currently have. And we determined, like you said, Harvey Elementary, Perez Elementary, Harold, Gillette, H, H M King, that was building B in the gymnasium, correct?
We didn't have any current leaks at Harold, other than that.
Okay, so I know we talked about a procurement process to go through just to get the leaks done. So I made a couple of suggestions to expedite the process. I assessed a lot of these roofs where the leaks were and I would think it's going to be very costly to do these leaks. So I recommended to get three contractors to get two bids for each, each of the buildings, so that way you have one bid for each building. At that point, we can determine, you know, obviously if you come under what you're, what you're allowed to spend on each, you know, under what you call.
If, if we go over fifty thousand dollars for any individual contractor, we would have to go out for bids. But if we're just doing repairs underneath the fifty thousand, as long as we have free quotes from qualified roofing contractors, we can move ahead and now go in for bids. So the advantage of doing that is we could get all the leaks for these schools repaired before school starts this year.
So we're actually, the process, correct. If you tried to go to R P, which based on the amount of money that's needed for this, I feel it would be a waste of your time and would possibly end up costing you more than just getting three quotes from contractors. Now, the reason I'm involved with that process is these are essentially Garland roofs and we want to make sure that those repairs are done for the warranty so that way when we're renewing, we're renewing all these warranties, we're not going back to say, well, they didn't fix this correctly. So if we do it right now with, with, you know, most qualified contractors, then we're good to go when it's time to start renewing these warranties.
So my question to you, Mr. Trujillo, is these are all the roofs that your company, do you represent?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
What time did you ever, I mean, I know the past is the past, but I think that we need to bring it light, is, will you ever contact that wants to come look at roofs and come and see the building?
Not me myself, so the Garland rep that was here prior to me, he's been with Garland for years, he's just retiring now. We kind of, we went through his records, he has records, files, and go on and on. And we have no record of it, he was, yeah, he was not contacted to come out and assess your roofs. And again, I have an owner's manual, I put it there for you guys to look at. Every five years, that's kind of, you know, the school should have contacted us, but also it's an annual fee. And what I do, you know, with my clients, when I start putting roofs on them, I contact them, it's a courtesy every year, but it doesn't always happen, you know? So that's kind of why we're in this situation and I understand that the administration, you know, you, you guys changed, you know?
Yeah, but our names be fine.
Yeah, files, files become an issue. So, you know, that's where we're at with that and that's kind of the process to get started. I would, I would help out by recommending contractors that I use sell our projects. No preference, it's just they're good contractors and they know roofs. So they would give you three quotes, we'd get repairs done and that would finish out phase one, you'd get it done before school starts. And then eliminate all this administration staff wasting their time putting R P out, you know, for something that doesn't need it.
Bring these contractors, you think so?
I believe there's one, I still have it off the top of my head, but yes, there is one out of Kingsville, I think he currently does some repairs for you right now.
Are you talking about Celeste?
Celeste, yes, she is one of our Garland contractors as well, so.
Probably at the bottom part of this page is that list, could you run down the list of schools again?
Harold, Harold has one here?
No, I think that's what we just discussed, that there wasn't one, it was just a.
No, Harold, Harold is fine. The other building that's not on here, the maintenance building has leaks in the maintenance building. So obviously if we move forward, we try to get the campuses done first before school starts and then we try to fix the leak, leak in the maintenance building. So that would be phase one, hopefully we finish phase one sometime in August.
Yes.
And then did you want to talk at all about phase two?
Yes, you can go over phase two.
Yes, ma'am. The dates that you had listed, the top four, five, six, eight, eleven, and sixteen, do they correspond to these campuses? Harvey was built in what, four?
Yes, correct, they correspond with the, with the, with the campuses, correct. Not, not with what's on the list there, but of the entire list that we had.
All right, so Harvey, does anybody remember when Gillette was built, it's probably before that? And when you say H M King Gym, are we talking the old gym, we're talking the dome?
Where we're talking, there's, there's the old gym and then there's the Fine Arts Building. And then in between those two buildings, there's kind of like a locker room and some other areas and that is the area that's leaking there.
Okay, so these, with the exception of Harvey, possibly Gillette, these were not roofs put on when they were built? These were probably roofs put on newer rooms, correct?
After, correct. Yeah, and I know Gillette, I'm talking with the other rep, Gillette, Harvey, those were, were re-roofed. And I believe, and we need to, we're still verifying this list, doing complete assessments on all of them, we haven't assessed the roof yet, so we're still doing that. But I know you guys have new construction, there may be something on this list that, you know, have changed, so we're going to verify that, you know, before you go to phase two.
All right, just to make sure.
Yes.
All of these markets have been voided.
Yes. Yes.
The reason why, I, I, the record show that Mr. Trusty Lucy walked in and Trusty Garcia, the reason why it was explained, and I know y'all love their lake, because I go to the Pride of America. According to Mr. Trujillo, was because we, for some reason, they were out there messing with it and voiding warranties.
Were, are, are that?
That's the only we can think of.
Well, it could have been any.
Or anything.
Yeah, it could have been anything from a mechanical unit installed and not contacting Garland and the roof gets cut into and they throw you a penalty. It could have been just lack of maintenance, you know, nobody's maintained it in a year, two, or three years, you know? It requires, and, and I, and I'll provide this, an owner's manual, this is what's given with all our warranties. It, it talks about the process for maintaining a warranty on a roof. It's just like your car, you use your owner's manual, they tell you you have to change your oil this time, you have to do this, it's the same process for the roof, just more technical, you know, as far as the maintenance.
But we, we hadn't had inspections every five years since.
No, sir.
Was that in itself grounds?
Well, that within itself, correct, and there was your record, because when we, we get called out for maintenance, we issue an extension of the warranty, we basically just say yes, continue the warranty because you comply with it. And we've gone through every record we are back, there's nothing on that.
I think. C T E building. That was a little time, so I'm pretty sure that they did some roofing over our, my class.
My classroom.
What?
My students have a classroom.
It stopped leaking, I know that, but I don't know who did it, I haven't seen it. I mean, I know that, I just assumed they were putting new roof on, you know?
It happens, I've seen it tons of times where things, you know, it just, like I said, it changes.
Because at the end of the day, and again, I know it's a tired beating, a dead horse, was just, you know, kicking the cans, turn of the day, is that we just didn't have assistance in place, we'll check, that's why we're out of luck. So that's why now whoever's moving forward, you have to have some play because that's why we're behind eight ball, it will continue to be, and it's not going to be the roof, it's going to be the sewers next. The, the sewers will be something else.
Yes, and so Michael.
In these high schools, we didn't have any plumbing.
Yeah.
So we just got you a better job.
One thing to point out is this building B C T E, that is the one with the audiovisual room, that is not the one that is, I guess, currently vacant. We, we looked at one building that's currently vacant that has, the ceiling is, tiles are all rotted away. That one is not something we're looking at in phase one, we're mainly looking at the building. That one is not something we're looking at in phase one. We're mainly looking at the buildings that are going to be used. And get them ready for students before school starts.
Well, I think what I understand. To pitch up pits is that we have a roof where all our technologies that. That's having to be covered with plastic. Okay? That's, that's mine that we as a district invested. I find that priority as well.
Okay, we, we do have.
Well, according to what Dr. Pitts said was that. That's, that's what I'm talking about. So I want to find out.
You're talking about what brains are.
You're, you're right. The brains are in that building that we're not looking at, uh. At fixing the leaks right now because it's so extensive, but Dr. Vuskis Cruz has a plan for relocating.
As we reanalyze the situation and, uh, we are in a very good position to extract that equipment. And we connect everything that is the auto modded. Plus, uh, the, uh, TV studio and the radio studio to this new location. So again, uh. To the lowest, then it will be okay.
Is those the only units back there that you might have to go through there? I mean.
We're going to have to do a little bit of an expansion. We have the cabinet in place so we can add the additional. It will be perfectly taken care of, so not.
Are they going to be in that group or?
They're going to be in that group, yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes, we're going to be rerouting everything, but everything will be like, as a matter of fact, this is going to do everything so practical for us because we are feeling one connection that we are not needing. That we have to maintain.
Do you have any idea where Garland, where Garland roof on? The high school itself?
Is that the new portion?
Yes.
No, sir. That one's not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I know you have the new high school and I, what I have on here is. Here is one, two, three, five, and six. I would imagine that's the old high school that, you know. And I'll look into that. So, so that's what we had on the high school. Then, like you said, the auditorium and I believe the gym. That's Garland. Oh, you don't.
No, sir.
I'm just going to. And that was all Garland and then the cafeteria and I believe, but. There's a gymnasium somewhere. Yeah, gymnasium kitchen. That's all.
So Mr. Trujillo, we only have a couple minutes left, uh, because we have a tight timeline with workshop. Did you want to talk at all about phase?
Yes, real quick. So the plan with phase two is, uh, basically go and prioritize what groups. We want to start getting back under warranty and compliance. Uh, and that process would be, you know, uh. With you guys determining which ones it is, then we, we have procurement options on how we can do this, uh. Uh, and save with district money as well as expedite the process and get it done quickly. Now, you have so many roofs. This is something you can do quickly. So prioritizing is, is a must. What I would think, I, I guess I did some estimates on what it would cost, uh. You're looking at anywhere from eight dollars a square foot to ten dollars a square foot to start getting these roofs. Under warranty. You try to replace those roofs, you're looking at twenty-five, thirty dollars a square foot. So it is very important that we figure out how we're going to do this and prioritize it. So that way we don't lose these roofs and. This doesn't make sense to the district to, to tear these roofs off because they're not in that condition to where they need to be put.
We will bring phase two back to the board though, before we move forward with it. So the first priority is to get all the leaks fixed before school starts. And again, for that, we just need the three contractors. We don't have to go out and earn RFP. Then a more lengthy process with getting all the roofs under warranty and then that'll involve, uh. Uh, probably a week or two of, uh, the contractors going and looking at all the roofs. And then us bringing it to the board, um, and then getting approved before moving forward.
I know you have a timeline for. So is that still in your timeline?
Our goal is to get it, the roofs fixed before school starts, the.
And based on my experience and what I'm seeing with contractors, that should not be an issue. As long as we get the, the, you know, approvals. You know, I can make, I have contractors. I know contractors that will.
So let me ask you another question. Whoever choose, we choose or as a board, or whoever is. Who's going to check out, dot the i's, cross the t's, make sure they're doing it right?
So that's, that's my job, yes, because we, we want to be in compliance with the, with when we get this roof back under warranty. That's, that's the way I'm looking at it. You know, our goal is to do this correctly. So I don't have issues when I'm renewing your warranties.
So we will start, um, tomorrow. Um, we're, we will, um. Uh, start getting the roofing contractors to take a look and do their bids. Um, if they're on buy board, again, we can just move forward with it, um, and, um. Expedite the process. If they're not, then we'd have to bring in on August tenth to move forward because it'd be over twenty-five thousand dollars. So we'll, um, we'll start with getting contractors to get some quotes. That's the first step.
Anybody have any more questions?
This will be paid for out of general fund.
This fiscal year?
This fiscal year.
Can we have a yes, sir?
Uh, the, the answer to that is probably yes, we probably could. Pay out of the S R. We'll take a look at the S R a little bit later on, but. It is considered environmental safety for students. So it, it could theoretically be paid out of the S R funds. And I think Mr. Trujillo had said that other districts.
Yes, yeah, we provided some information. We'll provide more information, but yes, there are school districts that are using it for their roofing. So it is available and Texas has approved it.
Is, is there, is there a guarantee on the patch and job that Jonathan will be doing or?
Uh, contractors that we use typically give a one-year under repair itself. So they'll warranty that section.
Does it reinstated in the, in the warranty?
That would be great, yes.
That's the question.
No, sir. No, sir.
About bringing your warranties back to line.
What it does do, once we, the renewal of the process is coating these roofs, doing whatever we need to do. Uh, to get these roofs back in the condition that they need to be to be fully waterproof and you be.
Is that phase two or phase three or?
That will face two. And phase two is probably going to extend because you're not going to get all your roofs. So you may want to call it phase two, phase three. It may have to be broken up in phases because you have over three hundred, four thousand square feet of roofs. You know, and if you're looking at eight to ten dollars a square foot, you know, that's. You know, you're looking for million dollars to, to get all these roofs back in compliance, you know? So we know it's not a process that's going to happen. Like we said, the funding can be used to the federal government for this.
This is something though, that again, it's, it, it needs to be routine maintenance that we build in for a long timeline. And we need to bring to the board what needs to be done, how much it's going to be, and then we'll need to set priorities of what needs to be done first. Because we're not going to have the money to do it all at once.
And we, that's why we started with the roofs. It's like looking at all those contracts and you have what is renewable and it's not. There's many, many more. Obviously, maintenance has not.
That's why we're.
So the first step that we had to do was, and we thought of a very good point, maintenance hasn't changed. However, now I have maintenance under our CFO, which makes sense because that's money. You know, that we pay for all these contracts, all these whatever we need to get fixed. So now he is overseeing some things, but we have to start with one problem first. Right now it's the roofs. We need to get those fixed.
Yes, and, and I like that, that concept. My, my, my thing is we. We give an investment on these roofs and I'm, I'm just kind of not, it's not settling well to know that the contractor. Did not make their effort to try to say, hey, let's go out there. And, and check the roof. Regardless of what administration was here. You know, we can't blame it on, on that. Because the company did this. They should have come in and said, hey, you know what? We're going to check if, we're going to check how this roof is doing five years from now. And you're correct. And I stop because I'm a salesman just like you are. And I, I, sorry for that. But it goes back to what type of stuff people do that. That's what it boils down to.
And it's just like administration. It turn, the turnaround is just big. But that's not an excuse.
And I'm not for the patch job.
Yes.
But you're right. But again, we finally started out with a problem. Because again, we don't have, and I'm going to say this, my dear affinity buddy. We don't have the personnel that is equipped to go up there and really assess like this gentleman. Again, no offense to our, to our natives people, but again, you've got a program going. If you're not doing plumbing. It's easy on a sheep rot. It's going to be a pain in the open. Go look at the just, go look at the roofs. I mean, unfortunately, he's, he's, he's from every angle, but he can't specialize.
And I see that.
They have a specialty person that's in charge, he or she of building whatever it is or have this, that something down the road.
He has a plan and, uh, he has a procedure. He's been done. He's overseeing that, but he's overseeing all.
We finally have a. Plan in place. We use the organizational chart that I talked about basically like a bits overseeing the, we had, but still on the wrong.
Because we.
Because we didn't really. But we, we, that's why we're learning. Again, it goes back to trying to get politics. Again, we're, we're deep eating from it. But again. We, that's why we're trying to get system. There was no systems in place. We're trying to get it moving. Like Dr. Bear talks about, we're flying a plane. We're trying to build it too.
We have, we have a plane that's leaking.
Tons of leaks.
And so there are other problems that we have. We all know that. But we've got to start somewhere. Right now we need to start with what needs fixing and what can we afford to get this. And in the best quality manner. So we start to go.
The superintendent is going to know about every contract. So it's been thirty years before. You're not, it's unrealistic. You're not going to know about it. We know about this because of the fire marshal. Alright.
True.
Well. In the fall though, we did a facility audit where we looked at all the facilities that we talked about. The roof was going to need to be fixed. So we knew that this was a problem. We started at that time, but.
And in two months, it's going to be something else.
Yes, true.
Three months after that, there's going to be something else.
True.
Well, you start building mass for like, that's what you start doing. You know what? Even after you do it, you're still going to miss the half a dozen or a dozen. It does, it does not happen in the district. But there is a limit. You know, there is a limit as to where you can say, okay, that, come on guys, twenty-five years ago, we got all.
But as soon as we know about something, then we want to act on it. And so that's why since.
I do have one question though.
Yes, sir.
The, the owners, uh, Harvey roof. That's an eighteen year roof right now. So even if we patch it, even if we renovate it. Is it worth? Is it worth?
The condition it is, yes, sir.
We don't have a one.
When you say reinstated, it's to the original thirty year?
Re- reinstated is extended what's left on the warranty. Now. There is an exception. So let's just say there are only five years left on your warranty. The way we do our restorations, the way we get these roofs reinstated, they is actually will. Yes, ten years. We'll extend that an additional five years.
So you're saying, Mr. Trujillo, is that? The company that comes in and restores the roof, we're still eligible now for the, the remaining of?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's the goal is to re, just reinstated.
More than what's going to be promised.
Yes, sir. That's, that's what we're working on. Yes, anywhere from like fifteen, fifteen years. You have so many roofs. Anywhere from fifteen years. I think the, the, the oldest one's probably ten years left. I, and I have that information and it's here. Yeah, so there's only five years left. No, it'll, it'll extend the remainder. If, if it only has, there's one roof that takes only ten years old. We, to reinstated, it's going to move thirty years. But then it goes back to me, our records and making sure that every five years we're respecting this, that every year we're doing maintenance on these roofs. We're doing the copying, the silence. That's all part of this whole thing. And I'll educate and provide that guidance.
Are you going to be coming out, you know, like your company would be coming out or does Dr. Pitts have any lines to make sure from that?
Well, on the five-year part, that is the responsibility of the owner. You know, because there's so many changes and that's the reason they do that. I mean, I'll be here in five years. I don't know. So that, that. Yes, Dr. Pitts, and that's where the records come into place and all that.
Any other questions, Mr. Trujillo?
Yes, sir.
Any more, Mr. Trujillo, regards to the?
Thank you so much.
Alright. Going on to the, uh, next item of business, retention stipend, Dr. Pitts.
Okay. Um, we are bringing forward a retention stipend that we kind of alluded to in the previous meeting. The stipend that we're recommending is five hundred dollars for all employees in November. And then five hundred dollars for teachers only that renew after the last date to resign for their contract. Um, usually teachers can resign anywhere up to forty-five days before the first day of school. However, next year it is changing to thirty days before the first day of school, which we have. Uh, August twenty-third being the first day of school. So we're really looking at about the last week of July. That teachers can still resign and get out of their contract without having to go for a board approval. Um, the budgetary cost would be two hundred fifty thousand dollars for all employees in November. A five hundred dollar retention stipend. For just returning teachers, we, we estimated a high value of a hundred ten thousand dollars. Then that would be if every single teacher returns. Um, so that's probably not going to happen. The funding source for this would be S R three. The, um, we have been to several workshops that have talked about salaries and retention stipends for returning employees. Uh, Dr. Paddas, myself and Ms. Galindo went to one of them at Region Two where, um, they. Again, said that this was definitely allowable expense. It seemed that. Most of the other districts there with Region Two, the majority of what they were using S R three for was salaries or retention stipends. The reason for that was that one, it isn't allowable expense and two, um. Covid hit all of the budgets really hard. And, uh, there's a lot of deficits, not just ours. We're not the only one. Um, but they're not only using it to, again, help with learning loss, um, whi- which again is a prime, um, prime. Uh. I'm trying to think of the word, uh, prime, it's not prime directive, but a prime initiative. That's the word I'm trying to think of. Thank you. Prime initiative for S R three, but also, um, again, one, two of the biggest things are, um, salaries. Uh, continue to employ existing, uh, salaries. And the other one is. Uh, continue to maintain the operations of the district. So those are two other big, uh, priorities of S R three. Um, at this time, I'll take any questions from the board. You said teachers only? Teachers only would be the ones returning. The reason for that is, uh, twofold. Number one. The hardest positions we have to fill are teachers. Right now, I believe we have five teacher vacancies at, that is four at Harold. Five at Harvey, um, I think two at Gillette, and I believe. Two at H M K, not including the ones that are frozen right now. So even this time, we're having a hard time. Um, getting teachers for next year, uh, and the auxiliary employees were able to fill a lot earlier. Again, we are planning to, proposing to have five hundred dollars to all employees in November. And again, teachers, because those are the ones that leave the most, uh, between years and are hardest to attract in the summer. Again, out of S R three funds and, um, uh. Any other questions at this time?
Any questions?
I've got two problems. August is clearly a retention stipend.
Okay.
Why don't we be honest about November?
If we're going to pay for it out of S R three, there's certain allowable expenses in the. They, they have basically advised us to call it a retention stipend.
The other thing is how does this ever? The other thing is, how does this ever go away? Ever, once you start. The third thing is, why wouldn't we just take these same dollars and add to salaries?
I don't think five hundred dollars is gonna file a, a teacher's decision to stay.
In July? No, in November it is, everybody, no, it is files, in July we all.
And I agree with this, it takes a, those are the jobs that everybody.
We would love to do that, we would love to do that, y'all through that, we would love that, but we need, make sure we have enough money to do that.
Looking at the budget, we don't have enough money to, it's, it's two hundred fifty thousand dollars for every employee. If we did a five hundred each time, we're talking five hundred thousand dollars for this year. And it's gonna be hard to balance the budget. And currently, we're looking at the behavioral, behavioral specialists, the, the L S S Ps. We're looking also at, at counselors, which is an allowable, lines very well with S R three. So we're gonna look at the S R three budget right now, but right now, we only have five hundred thousand dollars in salaries. And that's, that's basically gonna cover those positions, and that's about it. For, well, obviously, the counselors for sure, and that's, they're, they're not gonna be contingent upon the existing funds. Some behavior specialists, that's something that's going to be.
Look back at the special ed?
Yes, so that's.
No, but we have to plan ahead, so in three years, and we're looking at it every year, and if we get to that point where we feel like we cannot pay it from general fund, or whatever else we're generating money from, whether it's grants, et cetera, then we could move it to special ed funds. But then, at that point, they'd be serving the special ed students, right? And our goal is to start, if we start with the behavior specialist for these next three years, and we're working with really tier one instruction, and getting the kids to, to prevent kids from having to go into special ed, then hopefully, our numbers will be a little bit smaller. And, you know, we'll have some systems in place by year three, our staff will have been trained better on how to manage our classrooms, or manage our students, and then we can focus on the special ed. So we're, they're gonna do like a tier one. Or academic. Both. If this, if the student's behavior is affecting their, because if the student's behavior is affecting their academics, then it's gonna help both. So if the behavior specialist shows someone needs community and sound. Like, wouldn't we be able to use to evaluate that, to determine, okay, you know what, this child is tier one? Everybody's tier one, so everybody, right, right, everybody's tier one. So we're saying, we are focusing our efforts on tier one instruction, because the tier one instruction has not really been strengthened. And the way that we're handling students these past few years, there was a pattern of immediately referring to special ed. And therefore, the numbers have gone up quite a bit, and our dyags have been, where they didn't have the test and things like that. And so we've got to make sure that we're training our teachers and our parents and our, everybody really, on how to address those behaviors and not automatically think they're special ed disabilities. So that's where behavior specialist. And I see that, but if you have a stronger RTI, because you can have RTI behavior, so. Right. Do we have that advice? No, no. I think y'all were working on the RTI. We have been, we've been focusing on tier one. And so even talking to neighboring districts and across the state, really, with the trainings we've been to, there is no really good model of a, of RTI. And so we're having to start. My concern is like, what are the teachers gonna use to make that determination that, oh, I need to refer them to the behavior specialist? Okay, well then, that, that's. Like, that's why I have an issue, you know. To be further to be in. No, 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 like, okay, right now, we're gonna do, we're gonna use S R ones for the three years. After that, we're gonna, we don't have the money, we're gonna go to spend it. So. If, no, I said that's one option. Yeah. There's several different options we could use, we could use type of four to pay for the behavior specialist as well. No, no, that's for safety, that's for school safety, so that's why the behavior specialist could be paid out of that.
So let's go back to the retention.
Boy, if we're gonna do retention, that's our objective, that's our standing objective, that it needs to be done when we need to retain the teachers.
Correct.
Not six months prior to when we should have retained.
And, and you're, you're correct, so that's why, I mean, it's, it's, there's an agenda item coming up.
I'm not crazy about them, but obviously, that's the way the business will run, and that's what we are, we're business.
Correct.
And there's a reason why we pay plumbers ninety thousand dollars a year, and we pay teachers fifty thousand dollars a year, because you need a plumber more than you need a teacher. At least, when you need one, you need one more desperately. Hence, that's why they get paid more. So we need to look at that retention, and we might even have to pay what we need more of.
And I agree.
And what we can't get, you know, I'm sorry, but our teachers are a dime a dozen, math teacher, law.
They're not a dime a dozen, unfortunately, not right now, not at this point, unfortunately, it's very difficult to get.
Right now, with COVID, we're having difficulty, we have, again, that's fourteen vacancies of elementary, general education, pre-K through four, five, or six teachers.
How many are art teachers?
How many are arts?
Vacants.
How many, what do you mean?
How many are art teachers?
Art teachers, art, oh, we don't have any art vacancies at the elementary school.
How about, how about high school? About any school?
No.
About CTE teachers?
No.
Okay, some teachers are hard to find, other teachers are a dime a dozen.
But some teachers have left that we haven't replaced, that we're not gonna replace based on the number.
So it's not a vacancy force, Dr. Perez.
No, it's not.
We need to put our money where our needs are.
Right, and that's where the teachers, we need to invest in our teachers. And a question that was asked was, why would we give a retention stipend in November? Most districts do a December-November, like a holiday time, and many people do retire midsemester, mid-year. So I think that's why the trend in school districts started that, and I remember when I was in a school district where they were doing that, and it was, why not just put it as part of our salary, and they said, because you cannot promise that every year. If you put it as part of the salary, it's gotta be guaranteed every year. This is a one-time, and it's not guaranteed, so.
I just don't think people remember.
I agree, but they don't hear that.
Right.
But it's not guaranteed, because next year, every employee, if you were to go across the board with, with all employees as opposed to just teachers, if their salary is not increased by a thousand dollars, then they're behind.
You asked about, are we gonna keep doing it every year, and how, how do you stop it? Well, in the last four years, we've only done it twice. We did it last year. We only offered a hundred fifty dollars because we were in a, a budget crunch. The year before that, we had three hundred dollars, and the two years prior, we, we didn't have that, so.
And we are recommending, I mean, we are open to recommending a smaller stipend if y'all recommend that, but we're, this is what we're reading. My concern, my concern is that, I don't know if this is normal, I didn't receive a response, but we're at a budget workshop. I don't see any numbers on what normal expenses are, what, where you cannot get any money, just for general spending and, and general income coming in. But yet, I don't know this information, but you wanna tell me how to spend the S R money? That, that's, this is backwards to me. It's just normal to have no one in the budget shop, have zero numbers.
So, well, so let's talk about S R first first, and then I'll answer the other question.
Hold on, we're deviating, because again, we're a budget workshop, we're on stipends, and we're going everywhere else. So let's stick to the retention of anything, anybody has any other questions when it comes to retention, we'll move on. But again, there is an item on the agenda to discuss, or either approve or disapprove that. So is there any more, any more discussion when it comes to Dr. Pitts? Okay, go ahead.
Thirty-three percent of this S R budget comes across three odd lineups. Continue existing sta-, I mean, uh, even employee existing staff, retention pay, utilities. Now, by my way, that should be coming out of general fund anyway. This looks like, you know, on a third of this, choosing to supplement our supposedly out budget we're trying to balance, but in essence, this is what's balancing the budget. Is that a true statement?
Then, so that's a true statement, in that currently, we're using it to not only balance the budget, but to also get our fund balanced where it used to be.
And that was very clearly outlined to us, is that because of COVID, and because the ADA was hit across the state, all school districts like lost money. So this money was given to school districts to recover, to kind of get back on track, and so that's why it's allowable.
We know four years ago, those idiots three years ago committed us to. Well, we gotta, we can't just, we gotta fresh this every year, don't we?
Do, do whatever year.
It's bringing obviously money around.
Yes, you can do. Yes, so we were granted eleven point seven million for the next three years, correct?
Yes, eleven point one.
There's no projection of that for a budget this next year, because that's.
And I'm not against it, because I know it's something we've needed for years and years and years and years, and there's never any money, but three hundred thousand dollars in instruments. I know they need instruments, and probably, that's a low number. I see you put it under S R.
Well, part of the reason why it was put under S R is COVID is a big component of S R, preventing the spread of COVID. And, and when you have to share instruments, and you don't have a one-to-one ratio, then, again, especially with the Delta variant, you're opening yourself up to spreading COVID.
And we know one two.
Nice, nice, the number straight of work there to tie it in, but those kids have been slopping spit for thirty years.
You know, so why this?
Well, right now, we can't afford it.
Well.
It's good for the goose, it's good.
But this is the only thing, there's not one comment. I understand, this type is, we do take care of our teachers, Dr. Perez.
Oh, I know, we do.
You know, that, that, we're trying to, you know, we just pass something, you know, as support. But just earlier, Mr. Pino was here, that was a big priority.
Right.
Okay, I, I say that maybe let's take care of the places where our kids are gonna be studied, you know, first, and then let's look at, I mean, we got some tax due to this.
Yes, they do.
Not saying no, I'm just saying that's, I, I think our, our groups need to be taken care of, which is my thought.
Any, any other?
What needs to be spent in next year, S R three? Yes, yes, we're, we're gonna talk about S R three in a little bit, but we're about ready to submit it, we're, we're probably doing it within a week.
Any other questions when it comes to retention stipends? Uh, go ahead, move on to budget calendar.
But I think, I think what Miss Linus was asking is, do you have to put in the S R grant, specifically July stipend?
No, no, and you can do amendments as well, too, so we, we have time.
I mean, how detailed do you have to send it?
Well.
Because I know you can do amendments, like, they're gonna be probably.
They're, they're very general.
That was a copy that you're giving, right?
That's not actually what's a bit, but it's pretty much that same verbiage, in terms of what's added to the grant.
I really need this, I think, going back to the, to the, the schedule of retention stipend, I believe it should be for everyone, and I think. Take from one of these lineups. Not be needed, but maybe able to be picked up with some of the.
Like I said, there is an agenda item when it comes to the retention stipends that we can really knows that into, again, there's some great people, we need to go ahead and move on.
And we could recommend in the November one, and then come back later, recommend.
It would be item on B, would you approve the agenda?
That's why the workshop is.
Right. Budget calendar.
Let me tell you where we are on the budget so far. So salaries, we're in a really good place, probably, within the next few days, we will know exactly where we are on salaries as far as our bottom line number. As far as all other expenses, we're just under six million dollars, and we're just, again, negotiating the ones that are gonna be in S R three, and the ones that are not gonna be in S R three, and that are gonna be in the general budget. And then, so that's where we are on expenditures, we're, we're just about complete with that. Revenues, not quite as complete, there's a couple of factors that we're waiting for. Number one, we're waiting for our property values, because a lot of our revenues come from our local property taxes, and they haven't given us our final certified values, which they're gonna give us on July the twenty-fifth. So that'll, that will help us determine how much we're gonna get in our property taxes. The other thing that we're waiting for is tax rate, so there's two parts of your tax rate. There's your M and O tax rate, which is basically your general fund. And to figure out what our M and O tax rate is, the state tells each district what their maximum M and O rate is gonna be. That's gonna be set by the state, and we're gonna know that by August the fifth. They're going to tell us based on how much our property values increased from last year to this year, what the, the highest tax rate we can charge is. So then, the other part of our tax rate is the INS tax rate, which is to pay all of our debt. That, I am working with the tax assessor collector next week, after we get the final property values on the twenty-fifth, to determine what tax rate we need to pay all of our bond debt. And that, again, we have really done ourselves a favor in the last couple of years with a couple of things. We're almost to the point where, I was looking the other day, and we're, we used to be at like a nine hundred thousand dollar deficit, that we had to transfer from our general fund to our debt service fund. Now, we're looking at closer to a hundred seventy-five thousand deficit, and the reasons why are twofold. One, we've done a bunch of refundings that have reduced the interest on our debt. And the second thing that we've done is, when we have had a reduction in the M and O value tax rate, we have increased our INS tax rate on the same side. So our, we kept our tax rate the same, but more of that is going toward the debt. Again, we cannot do a higher M and O tax rate than what the DEA sets for us. The good thing is, whenever they lower our M and O tax rate, then their share of our one-nine-nine, our general fund raises. And all, I know we have a limited amount of time today, but on August the fifth, I'll be able to talk in, in depth about our tax rate, and we'll take a look at it, and what we're proposing for next year. But, but right now, again, I, I think it looks like we're in a, a good place right now. Our, our deficit is definitely decreasing as far as our debt every year.
July twenty-fifth, when you get the final numbers from a tax assessor.
That's correct, and then August the fifth is the other magic deadline where we get our, that's a deadline for them to approve our, basically, our M and O tax rate. We should be able to get it before August the fifth, that's just the last possible date that they could, could give it to us. But in the past, they've given that to us five to seven days earlier, as long as we have submitted all the information that they need. We have to basically submit the final values to the state.
Have you had any preliminary conversations with her about projections? I mean, real estate markets going crazy.
So I have, the, so the, our, they give preliminary values, and our preliminary values are quite a bit higher than what our preliminary values were before. So it does look like we are gonna see quite a raise in our, in our certified values, which, again, we've, for a long time, we've had a problem where we've lost money every year, because the state expects us to collect values on what they assess the property at, and then the county has assessed it, quite, assessed it quite a bit lower. So I, I think that we're, I, nobody likes higher taxes, or likes higher property values, but I think that at least as far as the school is concerned, it's gonna close some of that gap this next year.
We're not the one that did that. We didn't raise the taxes. But that's not what they think.
No, and, and that's why it's important, on the INS side, I mean, it's gonna, it, it could take that to zero.
It, it could, so.
Transfer portion of it, and that's why it's gonna be very, very important to be a little closer to that tax rate. Because you're, you're exactly right, we didn't, we have not, we have not increased our tax rate.
And we have been. And we have been. So to pay your debts.
Conversation to have right now because if our newspaper reporters here and they put the correct information that we're not the ones raising it, people will read that and they'll understand hopefully better.
That's, that is a ninety percent believed myth.
Right, exactly.
So to pay your debts, you have three choices. One is you, um, you set a tax rate that will be for all your debt. The second one that we used to have is to you, uh, is to transfer from our general fund into our regular fund. They said we can't do that anymore. That is not an option. And then the third one is we do have a one point five million dollar fund balance for our, our debt. Just like we have a fund balance for our, um, general fund, we have it for our debt and we do have a healthy fund balance. And again, we're using that this year to transfer some money. So we didn't have to raise the tax rate last year. Um, the important dates on the budget calendar moving forward are, um, but we were moving the budget workshop to the fifth. That's a Thursday. The reason for that is we will have all our tax rates in at that time. So we will be able to have our discussion about what tax rate we're going to recommend. Um, we will have all of our revenues then, pretty taxes. So we will have all our data by the fifth. And again, uh, I did a survey of surrounding districts. We tried as hard as we could to push it earlier this year, but um, we're not going to be able to do that. And again, the other districts are also having it the, uh, either the week of the twenty fourth, like we're having over some of them even after that, the last week. And again, the main reason for that is tax rates. We just do not have all the information we need to set our tax rates yet. Um, so in, instead of having two board workshops, we can just have one budget workshop on the fifth. Uh, then we would have to post, uh, on that Monday so that it's in the paper. On the twelfth, you have to post your proposed budget and tax rate in the newspaper for ten days ahead. And then the twenty fourth in green, that is the day we would have the public hearing um, to, uh, talk about the budget and then we would approve the budget on the same date there. So, yes, sir.
We want to do it. Let's do it here. Somebody has this brilliant idea. It's not too late. Well, we've, we've much already done. Then what you have in here, I brought this up last year. I brought this up the year before.
I, I hear what you're saying, but the, the, the other districts do the same thing and the reason for that is because of the timelines. You, you do not know until the beginning of August what your tax rate and revenues are going to be. Then you have to post it in the paper ten days before you have the public hearing and the timelines just aren't going to work.
Doing it the day of. This kind of doesn't seem very sincere.
Well.
Doesn't seem very transparent. I'll use the word.
Well, we are posting it ten days ahead of time.
But I, but I can't tell you about it till the day of. Hey, this is stupid. Why are we doing this? Well, it may be stupid. Going to change it in thirty minutes.
Well, we're going to, we're going to post our budget on, uh, the twelve. So twelve days. No, we won't. We'll be looking at it on the fifth.
It's just kind of.
We have to under, we have to understand that we are working with some variables that are beyond our control. But a person who doesn't understand the budget process, I get, you know, in the public that it doesn't understand it, it is, why would we wait so late? Because I used to wonder the same thing for the districts that I've been before. Why do they wait so late? Well, there are some variables that are beyond your control. But we are going to post it. We are going to let y'all know on August fifth and then post it looks on August twelfth. And then have a public hearing on the twenty fourth. So we, looks like we're using about three, three weeks right there. Right, so in the public, we need to publicize it as much as possible, not just in the newspaper, but.
Tell me about it. If I can't speak on it, what good is it? I can't speak on it because your budget's going to get voted off twenty minutes later.
I, I, I hear you, but we're, we're bound though by the timelines that are set before, so and that's why everybody does it the same way. The twenty fourth is a Tuesday.
What can we do on a Friday? Public hearing on the Friday, that gives you three days to work and the weekends.
I wouldn't have, I wouldn't be opposed to that, but I'd like to see the million dollar question. How many people are going to show up the next season? That's the exact million dollar answer.
You're right. You know what? The answer? Probably zero.
But whatever you have one, so you're.
I don't think anybody's trying to be.
We're not opposed to that. This is just a recommendation. So we're not opposed if you want. Does the timeline allow for us to post a public hearing on that Friday before that, the twenty fourth?
So. The twelfth would be the day that we publish it in the newspaper. Uh, ten, ten days after that would be the twenty second, which would be a Sunday. So it has to be posted at least ten days.
Found this under crisis, especially the people keep a mind and do this every year.
Right, if, if, if we want to try to fix it a little bit, then let's talk about it and try to fix it. That's, that's what I wanted. I know, but I want a solution.
Real quick, let the record show that we're still in, uh, in a project workshop, we've been, we're scheduled for a meeting. Six, but we'll continue to work, uh, continuing our budget workshop.
What complicates the issue also kind of is that we have a newspaper that's published once a year.
It's published on Thursdays, but we have to get the information in on Monday to publish it on Thursday.
Right, and that rate has to be in there, right?
Correct, yes, that's true. So.
It's a problem that's going on forever and I do agree with you, Colonel, because I know that has been one of your biggest difficulties, but the timeline is just, but again.
This is something that we, we can invest a big gate, but, uh, we're, this is going to come up for an agenda item, um, in the board meeting and our recommendation is now doing that, uh, everybody else is doing the same thing. And again, it's because of the timelines and, uh, um, that, that's, that's our recommendation.
Any other, like I said, it's a, Dr. Pitts is correct. There's an agenda item to our regular working here at six, so we can actually further in those dive into that, uh, issue. Last thing, actually two more. We have the answer to, Dr. Pitts.
I'm gonna defer, so we already talked about tax rate and I'm going to defer this agenda item to, uh, Dr. Sondal.
Thank you, Dr. Pitts. I know we kind of discussed the answer three little, um, earlier in our workshop. I want to just give an opportunity for you guys to ask any questions, uh, ask for any explanation on some of these line items that we posted as part of the, the conversation we had with district leadership, the teachers, principals, C I C, feedback that we received from our, our community, parents, students. So we take that into consideration as part of these, uh, recommendations. Uh, all these recommendations do meet the guidelines, the requirements set forth in S R three. And we want to make sure that we do our diligence to make sure we spend them accordingly. Um, the things that I've outlined as, um, Dr. Pitts, um, has mentioned earlier, uh, some of these things are to, to continue some of the services we provide in the district. Uh, actually, when we first started looking at this, we were looking at pulling more of the monies to try to assist, you know, with the, the needs of the district. Uh, but when we start looking at what our instructional needs, we start looking at, um, the personnel that we needed to serve the students. Um, being based on COVID, because of COVID, uh, we felt some of those things were more priority. Uh, and that's what we put into this, um, proposed S R three fund. Again, this thing is, is pretty close to being, I already put this all in the, um, system. Uh, based on the recommendations in twenty seven, eight, nine, and once Dr. Perez gives, they go ahead, I can, uh, submit the grant. Um, so that we can get it approved and go into NOB and get our monies. So, um, I'm here to answer any questions you may have in regards to the S R three.
It's a person three.
S R three.
That's S R three, right? That's what we're talking about, right?
The reason why is because our, 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 our sister two.
It is S R three.
I'm assuming that, that returning existing staff to the places that we would access employees.
That's correct.
I'm sorry?
Some.
Some.
Behavior specialists that we.
Oh, no, okay, yeah, yeah. Yeah, with those kind of exceptions, but I mean, but once, there are ones that we detained through the drawdown or the closing of the schools, that's one of, that's my definition of, of, of an excess employee, not by name, but by position. But the number is the same across the board on the budget, five hundred thousand every year. So my, my assumption would be we would boost those people hopefully this year through attrition.
If, the last numbers that I looked at with, with Mr. Perez in regards to the, um, teachers that we absorbed as part of the consolidation, we were at twenty three, Mr. Perez, so twenty four. Twenty eight positions that we've absorbed as part of the consolidation.
Maybe three or four.
Not teachers, but total staff.
Total staff.
Yes, total staff.
And with the vast majority of them being in the blue collar, paraprofessional crew range. How about in the professional range?
We've absorbed a lot of positions, the mystery positions, uh, teaching positions, so.
I think the last time I saw you was, I think I counted two or three.
Two or three what?
Teachers that were, that, that's been a couple, I put them on.
And we're up to where?
No, that we're still in what was considered.
Oh, that we're still on like an excess? Oh, a dual.
Yeah, excess, excess. Are in the, in the blue collar range. There might be a couple of teachers, but they're not, they're like P E's, things like that.
Right, so I, I hear your, your thought that it should decrease.
I would think it would decrease as time passes because.
So I have an answer for that. Um, that is not just excess employees that we're continuing that. We can use it for any employee that we're, that we are currently employing. And the rationale of keeping it five hundred thousand for each year is again, we can employ different personnel that, uh, are not necessarily excess and that will help our fund balance. That'll help us balance our budget.
Where's Ellie, Andy?
Uh, local education agency is basically the district. A local education agency is basically the district.
Wears in the back of my mind is we don't begin to drunk and say we're all payless in the room, which is we got the money.
Right.
Let's spend it. Now, we've got, now we still have, we ran out of money before we ran out of money.
Well, I mean, considering what we've done this year with reducing the deficit the way it has, I would hope that as long as I'm here, that's not going to happen.
I don't think it will, but.
We've got to find it.
We got three, about eleven million dollars. And, and that's my concern is that you know, it was, four years from now, you don't have seven knuckleheads on this board saying those guys were idiots. We, so we, and, and be right.
It's there. Yes, we haven't brought it to you, but, but yes, that's a great observation, Mr. Pitts.
Amend this, hey, I'm sure. Um, indirect costs, just a one day jump.
Yes, that's correct. And so indirect cost is with any grant, whenever you spend dollars for a grant, you get a certain percentage back. For this grant, we get fourteen point six percent that goes right into the general fund. For every dollar, a hundred dollars you spend, you get fourteen dollars and sixty cents in your general fund. For indirect costs.
Oh, that's indirect costs.
Indirect costs, yes.
We haven't touched that.
No, and, and we don't get, right, we haven't touched that and, and we don't get any of that until we make the actual expenditure. Then we draw down, um, uh, the expenditures for that month, but, but no, we haven't touched that.
Prudence might dictate that we wait till the third year.
Say that again?
Prudence might dictate that we wait till the third year, you know.
Well, usually we, we try to, we try to wait till the end of the fiscal year to draw down our, our indirect costs, just to be safe.
Yeah, I'd be okay with that. Yeah, just take it and put it in the, build a reserve, yeah, but.
My question is, how much of the S R we already spent? Because we can't say we're just going to get the S R, we're going to get the S R. How much of S R is left?
Well, the budget that you have in front of you is, is all allocated, that whole eleven point one million dollars.
That's out here. That's next year.
And that's for the next three years.
The next three years.
We're also going to get S R two.
So yes, we are going to get S R two. We're looking at possibly three million dollars for that, that, we don't know the exact amount yet. They give us four point nine million, but they're going to take away some from that based on, uh, our, our attendance for this year. Um, so, uh, again, that grant is due the beginning of September. We'll work on, um, putting together, uh, spending that grant. But again, S R three has been used a lot to take care of our needs. S R two again could be used for those long-term roofing warranties or, uh, some of the, the vehicles that are falling apart that we've needed forever, um, or again to, for salaries and help with the fund balance as well too. So we'll be bringing that to you as well.
Since you brought it up, there is a plan to work with placing buses.
Or leasing or.
Or something.
Yes, we're, we're working on that right now.
That's three years and enterprise voice is our entire fleet over three years.
We have looked at leasing options and, and after the budget process, then we will bring something on, on vehicles to the board. We have been looking into that already. We could do that on a best or two funding, yes. Right, they don't have the chips, right?
We had a reason, it was a very good reason for maintenance to show us the situation of the buses. We didn't have any in the kit cabinet. We had them in the fair and below, I think.
So we're looking at building our, our routes based on the number of kids we're going to have attending. They're going to change because we're only going to have five campuses instead. So we're looking at our needs and our numbers for buses for next year. And then once we get registration done, we'll be able to more accurately predict how many buses we're going to need and the condition of our buses and then bring something to you.
But, but really, we really have about three hundred, three hundred mile football roters. That's what's tearing the bus up, that's what's causing this miles. We only have so many. I'm afraid you have to, potentially to a point where we're going to put some, some hanger things out there.
Ju- just like we're looking at a long-term schedule for replacing, um, and keeping our roofs in, uh, warranty. We're also looking at for vehicles, uh, for our light fleet, for buses, and then we're also looking at for technology too. This is something that we haven't really had long-term plans for how we're going to sustain our facilities, facilities, our vehicles, our technology, infrastructure and devices as long as I've been here, which is eight years and we're looking at, at bringing that to you.
It's also the option of a prison rebuild. That might be a good option for our really old buses. I mentioned the rebuild for old buses, about the same possibility.
Well, we've also looked at, um, there's subsidies for getting more fuel efficient buses. Some of them that are, I think propane, but some of them that are just a lot more fuel efficient and then they give subsidies for that, but. Yes, Chris Roberts, in the first row. So, so. Right, by moving the eggs around, that, that's going to help us with our general fund. Because again, like you say, then there's other costs from the general fund that can be absorbed by the title one or some of those other grants, which is going to absorb from our general fund. So yes, um, we're, we're hopefully using S R three and S R two not only to address learning loss, but also like they were telling us at our, our meetings to get our, our fund balance in order and make sure we can not only sustain it for these three years, but get our finances in order so that after the grants in order, we're, you know, we're not in a big deficit again.
No, so we're not going to, uh, have fear that somebody's branch or loan would have to be spent by certain amount of time.
No, we have three years. We have three years to spend this money and.
This one, but the title one grant. No, we really just rely on the title, the title ones, the special ed, the, um, it's not really a grant, but the state.
We worked hard on maximizing our grant expenditures and tried to spend the majority of that every year. Um, there is some carryover, but, uh, if you don't spend the monies, then they tend to think that you don't need all the monies next year and they don't carry over the full amount of the next year.
Any more questions coming to S R three?
You know, with the, with the correct configuration of this, coupled with the increase in property tax value, coupled with our ability to get students back and increase our ADA, then we can really consider that.
Anyone who comes to the S R three? You want to build some bins? Dr. Vasquez, Chris?
We'll get a stadium?
Open us a barn.
Not before, just something, as I get that auditorium, he's saying it could be at the stadium.
And the stadium, and the track.
And an amphitheater, and. We need everything.
That's it.
We need students there.
We need students back in the areas to get them, that's what we need, and we can start talking about this and stuff.
So we have a, in front and go ahead and share a phone on it. The latest on the summary of biggest surveillance devices for the entire district, with the exception of warehouse and transportation. So that this is basically on everything that is instructional, instead of the non-instructional facilities. I'm proud to say that the system over at the warehouse, as well as transportation, is fully operational and thoroughly independent from all the surveillance systems in the district. We began with the school campuses listed, H M K has the majority of the cameras, so we have a total of a hundred and seventy-one cameras at H M K. They all connect to one single server. And the cameras are installed at the Fine Arts Building, as well as the FEMA domes and the entirety of the main H M K building up front. There is a total of four cameras not working currently at H M K that we're gonna have to look into ways of replacing those, okay? And again, they only have one server unit, the total history, number of days recorded, it's an estimated ten to twelve. So I'm using the lower number in there, so we need to go back in history to look for video, it's about ten days. Using H M K as an example, we'll proceed to do the remaining campuses, Memorial has fifty-eight cameras. And seven are not functional, fifty-one are working, they have one server unit, the server unit is in good health. Jonas Gillette is totally down. The cameras at Gillette, they are from two thousand and five, so we do the math, we are dealing with a system that is already sixteen years old. It has three servers, they are analog systems. These are not IP-based cameras, we tried in the past to replace this, but the cost to replace the entire system at a, at Gillette, it was rather high. However, we need to do something in regards to student safety, campus safety. The system at Gillette is sixteen years old.
How about the school?
The school is sixteen, that system was put in place when the school was opened in two thousand and five.
Really?
Yes. We have done multiple repairs to the Gillette system. However, there is nothing else that we can do with those three units, as a matter of fact, we can no longer find parts to replace some of the components in the servers. Yes, ma'am?
Can you move some from Memorial since that's closing?
Yeah, the bottom section of this document actually has the information that we need, so we can make that move from Memorial over to Gillette. And we'll see this next, and I think it's gonna put a smiley in our faces. Continue with Perez Elementary, they do have a strand system, it was done, I will say, an estimated two years ago. Records do indicate that the cameras are working, it's a total of thirteen cameras, one independent server unit and an estimated thirty days in the history. It's identical to the system at Harold Elementary, they do have also a system, thirteen cameras. No cameras down, one server, three days in the history, but I need to say that Perez and Harold, they need additional cameras. The number of cameras they have is just minimum, used to go ahead and look at the perimeter, the hallway area. But I, we get into looking at blind spots, definitely, we can identify plenty of locations in there that we need to enhance. We need to run cables for those cameras, we need to run also the unnecessary software today, the camera location. Harvey is in good standing, they use a milestone system, they have fifty-six units, one camera is down. We've been staying on top of this system, but we're gonna have to do something about the software. The company is now asking for the license. And if we don't renew the license, basically the cameras will disconnect. So right now, we have a system working, but we are planning on switching or moving, migrating the system to Sadian. It is basically a system that does similar work compared to milestone, but it will not hold those customers because of a license on the software fee. So we're trying to be smart on this. Again, Harvey is in good standing, Clever Elementary is a system that is tapping into the server that we have at Central Administration Building. We just provided maintenance, this server here at this location about a week ago. With the storm, we had a little bit of a glitch in there, we have the servers connected to batteries, so if the power goes out, the servers continue to roll at least for two hours. But again, occasionally we have a hiccup, so Clever and Central Administration work out of the same unit, the same server. Except that through the network, we split the service to, to the two campus locations. Those cameras are in good standing and our recommendation is to keep them at Clever, so we can go ahead and move those cameras around as needed, especially with the wonderful plans that we have for Clever Campus, okay? POG is independent, they have twelve cameras, we have to do some work in there, we don't know whether or not for the cameras were affected by lightning strike, electrical damage, but we cannot bring them back. We are gonna be most likely looking into getting a, a camera in, in between. When I'm saying between, I'm referring to the quality type video that it releases to the person that is either retrieving the video from the history, okay, or the very location. At times, an enhanced camera is necessary, at times, say, a fixed-up camera, it's all we need, as long as we are recording the, the scene. And again, last to the very end is K I Z administration, we have about fifteen cameras, yes, we need more, but at any given moment, we always emphasize priority over at the campus level, so we can go ahead and put cameras on schools instead of cameras at central. So that's gonna be, again, the account. Now, regarding the move, and thank you, Ms. Ramos, it is possible, we started looking at the license and see if the vendor or the company behind the software will allow us to go ahead and migrate the cameras from Memorial to Gillette, the answer is yes, you can do that. So we recommend moving the cameras, we have a total of, again, fifty-eight cameras right now in good standing. And if we make the move, we hope that we can go ahead and install the fifty-eight cameras at once and make them go, however, there's always a risk of losing some of the cameras during the transfer. It's very sensitive equipment, okay? We have a little problem, at Gillette, we don't have IP cables or network cables to connect to the cameras. And these are not wireless cameras, we do not endorse wireless transfer for video, okay? So we have to install cables at Gillette, so we can connect to a switch and then make the cameras roll in, that comes to an expense. Definitely, it is strongly recommended to move the cameras from Memorial to Gillette, and right now it's an estimated thirty-five thousand, two hundred and seventeen, with fifty-five cents. If we compare that to an estimated a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that will cost us to bring a brand new system for Gillette Middle School.
Are you being modest?
I've been modest, ma'am. Copper right now.
But you need more of this?
Right now, we are looking at establishing the foundation, so we can migrate. Once we bring the server in, we create the necessary space, so we can continue adding cameras as we bring them in, as the budget allows to, to do that during the school year. We understand that we cannot do this at once, but right now, we don't have any cameras at all over at Gillette. And by bringing the Memorial cameras over to Gillette, will get us back into safety and then we keep on adding. We can try very hard to get it on, however, the only caveat is copper is hard to find in the market right now. And COVID is hitting everything, it's not only the processors for the computers, it is buying the cable and the cable is just from one week to the next, the price is increasing. You, you can go on a difference, fifty, sixty dollars from one week to the next, it's very upsetting, but that is reality, but it's, it's double. We're gonna have to, that will be most likely a Dr. Pitt's question, but.
Which budget we talking about, this year's budget, next year's budget?
As we, we're, if we're planning on doing it this year, then that would be from this year's budget, if we're trying to get done before the kids come back.
There's your message on here.
Yeah, I think so. Not, not two million dollars worth, but.
That's definitely doable.
Very doable.
When you start talking about
Not eight, ninety-eight now.
The, the systems and the cameras, does the, the Sadian system require Sadian cameras, the strand requires brand cameras, or are the cameras all interchangeable?
The cameras are interchangeable at any given moment, we are trying to bring devices that they are non-profitary, we refer to them as non-legacy. So it means we can go ahead and move them across, so they can work.
And have the cameras that are not working, not the forty-four, we get that. Are they broken, are they fixable, are they re-stored?
I can tell you, some of them, they received the damage because of leaking roofs. So I found one that had a, all we needed, all we needed, it was a goldfish inside the camera, okay? And others, it was because of age. And some of these cameras, maybe exterior cameras, the cameras on the outside, considering the conditions in South Texas, they take a beating. And it's only convenient to go ahead and maintain some of these and replace them, so we've been very good, I can tell that the Tony Department, Mr. Bassan, our Network Specialist, he's been very, very proactive in regards to looking at how many units we have throughout and making sure that they are rolling.
All being interchangeable, I mean, you, you're capable or able to take advantage of some discounts, maybe not now, but in the future, plus COVID and things get down to make three D five, a hundred cameras just to store ahead.
Once the camera is installed, we do the maintenance, if the camera needs to be replaced, we buy the camera from the shelf and we install the camera ourselves. We don't get the technician from the company to do the installation. We try to do as much in-house, so we can save the dollars to.
Who's saying it's not working, all's department?
We all do diagnostics, yes. We, we have the equipment to go ahead and connect the camera to a mini LCD panel that will either send us a display or nothing at all.
An annual maintenance plan?
We do have that in place, yes. Yes, Ms. Ramos?
Principals can tell you what cameras are working on their campus, can't they, because they push the button and the picture shows.
The cameras do report themselves, so when you have a gray or a matrix and if you see a blank, black square, there's a problem in there, you won't see it. And at times, there is a, an image that is still, and you get to see that people was walking, but they're frozen, that's a problem. But on, on regular basis, Mr. Rolando is, Mr. Bassan is checking the service and making sure that something comes through the lines.
So this system means how long it is reporting, correct?
The history, yes, the number of days that they stay in, in history there. And yes, some of them we need to increase, like H M, we're looking already at increasing the number of days at H M, we recommend at least a good one month. Right now, there was no system at H M on, uh, joining K I Z again, that system was totally down, so we look at H M immediately, we fixed it. And intercom the same, proud to say that intercom is done, so in regards to student safety, we are improving at H M.
Even the non-credit ones?
Yes, in the outside buildings. History is not gonna be there.
Unless you.
No, the servers, they have to continue their record, because they, as another of like, the settings at H M, they are on motion, so we can save some space on the server, we let the cameras roll twenty-four hours, seven days, a week, three hundred, three hundred and sixty-five days, the whole year. We're gonna be killing some of those plates on the servers, we're trying to get smart, more capacity.
Well, wouldn't they be able to record the recording?
It's, it's, it's a huge amount and of data that you'll need to explore.
As an administrator, if I ask for a certain recording
Yes.
of an incident, you can record that?
Oh, we do, and we archive, we put it aside, it doesn't stay there, so if there's an incident, there's something needs to be provided for some type of investigation, it's immediately put aside and stored in the server, yes. Yeah, I was, yeah, I was referring to the possibility of maybe an incident that is not reported until days after, and then by the time the document comes to us and we try to see it, it's not gonna be there, that's my case.
Yeah, this month?
Yes.
Well, you got threads and, and Harold thirty days, I think high school.
It's not more, well, especially because it's our biggest campus. And, and I know that maybe a hundred and seventy-one cameras might seem a high number, but let me tell you, we need more than that.
Well, at the high school, we're on principal ladder, it was two mile radius, a perimeter, I had sixteen cameras and four were broken. Our high school has a hundred and seventy-one cameras, that's incredible.
Yes.
Y'all have been a fantastic.
And we still have some blind spots in there, that every time we look at the new location, we address it immediately. We do, because our students, I know I'm being extreme, but our, our students have some favorite places to go to and we have to be very proactive because it's student safety.
Now you check people.
Yeah.
Any other questions when it comes to the campus, the, the, I'm sorry.
Non-cameras, could you, you said that all the outside buildings have been installed now?
All the outside buildings at H M, the former C T E, the radio, TV studio and so on, they do have automotive, they have the metal building in the back, they do have.
R T C, that's enough.
Yes, I would say they have intercom over there, it's working. We're gonna do a formal, yes.
All right, any other, any other? All right. You want to adjourn this budget worship at six thirty-two?
Thank you very much.
I'll give you all two minutes.
Two minutes.
Ted, Ted. Sorry, we got things to do.
The answer is no, Miss, is we're staying down.
Yeah, we're staying down, we're gonna stay up. We will stay down, right? It's six thirty-seven. PM on Tuesday, July twentieth, twenty twenty-one, I call this regular meeting of the Keeneland School District to order. This time we have a roll call vote. Mr. Ryan Kupal.
Here.
Lieutenant Colonel Bright.
Here.
Mr. David R. Garcia.
Here.
Ms. Elizabeth Ramos.
Here.
Mr. James Lucy.
Here.
Ms. Delmas Salinas. And Mr. Cordogars is present. At the record show that there is a quorum of board members present. And this meeting has been posted in accordance with Governor Code Chapter five five one, State of Texas Open Meetings Act. Also, uh, for the record, that show that our superintendent is present, Dr. Cecilia, uh, Fettis. And along with Kristi Goddard with the law firm of O'Hamlin, Demrock, and Castillo. Welcome, Kristi. This time we move on to the moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to be Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
This meeting will be live video stream at HTTP colon forward slash, forward slash, BIT period, LY forward slash three, S R O L Q R. This time we move on to item number four, the adoption of the agenda, do I have a motion to adopt this whole agenda? And made by Mr. Trusty David Garcia, their second. And second by Ms. Delmas Salinas. Any further discussion? And now proceed to vote. All the favors say hi. All the posts say nay. Motion carries seven up. This time we have uh, item number five, public participation. This time this is up there, do you have anybody who wants to address the board?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. We have none. Go ahead and move straight into uh, communication, item number six, from the administration, uh, Dr. Bennett's, uh, superintendent's update, RSSP and COVID nineteen.
Good evening. As part of the superintendent's update, I am bringing information to you on the RS, RSSP COVID nineteen recovery and acceleration plans. Uh, last year, there was a presentation sharing that we received the RSSP grant, the Resilience School Support Program grant. It partnered us with TNTP, um, the New Teacher Project Organization. And what their role is, is to work with us in kind services, not funding, on strategic plans. So the good news is, we also uh, had to reapply for year two and we received the year two grant as well. So this um, PowerPoint presentation is going to share um, some of the work that we've accomplished this year, where we're going and how we're going to get there. So this reviews our twenty nineteen, twenty twenty taper, Kingsville demographic data. The next slide shows information on our RSSP team members this year. This differs a little bit this year than the last year because we are involving all of our campus principals and our campus ITCs as well as um, central office staff. We are going to focus here too on social emotional supports for students and academic support for learning loss. And the reason we are focusing on those is because in a bit, I will show you um, ESR survey information that led us to that area. Current initiatives aligned to our work, we applied for a school improvement grant. And we received that grant as well. So we will be partnering this year with ESC two and E three Alliance for school improvement. Which is also part of our strategic plan and they are working very closely with RSSP grant. And so that we are not causing more work, but really aligning the work. We've also reviewed our RLA curriculum, our reading language arts curriculum. We've developed primary and secondary resources, many different resources were being used. And so this year, we are focusing on um, informing teachers of what our primary and secondary resources are for reading language arts. We've designed a curriculum map for reading language arts, which the curriculum writers um, are using. We scheduled curriculum writing throughout the year in preparation for each nine-week period coming up. We are developing reading language arts environment and instructional look for, so really setting the systems, structures and expectations for instructional um, delivery and assessment protocols. We are collaborating on a walkthrough calendar to model observation and feedback coaching support. That is going to be um, a heavy piece of our work with ESC two and E three Alliance. Is really um, providing instructional leadership and coaching to our teachers in our walkthrough model. So what have we done in the past of six to nine weeks? Well, we have completed curriculum writing, not just for elementary, but also middle school. We incorporated a Brahma summer reading series this year to um, ensure that our students are reading over the summer. We are in the process of evaluating our STAR data. We've aligned campus schedules with accelerated learning times embedded. So we've actually provided schedules to campus principals on what the instructional day should look like. We are developing prioritized needs for the beginning of the year professional development. And those were actually completed this week and that has all been planned for August. And again, we are continuing to develop systems and structures for instructional delivery. Our focus this year in the RSSP work is third and sixth grade reading language arts. As you know, reading impacts every other content area. The reason we selected those two grade levels is um, third grade, all students must be reading on grade level. And sixth grade is where we lose a lot of students in the transition period. And so that's why we're heavily focusing on those two grade levels. Now, we are sharing the work across our campuses, across principals, across teachers. But that is the data that our grant work will be focusing on um, when we come together. Did you have a question, sir?
Yes, I do, ma'am. Thank you for that. Just a quick question, and I don't know if you have those numbers yet or how many. But how many kids uh, to date have taken advantage of our summer reading program, which I think was long overdue and glad we started it? Is there like a kind of a number of how many we've seen so far, summer incidents?
Yes. Um, gosh, I lifted those numbers last week. I'm so sorry. I wanna say about eighty-seven students are participating in that, about forty-something of those students consistently. And so we do know that it was our, and I'll, I can show those numbers with you. I'd be more than happy to show those numbers with you tomorrow. Um.
So a big pool of eighty-seven to Rappis district? Allow me. Allow me to ask probably in general.
I'm doing it. I'm just not going on line and saying that, but that's my problem here.
So the way we're determining, the way we're determining those numbers of the, is, is the parents who have registered their children. And then we're looking at reports to see who is consistently participating in the Myon reading or the AR accelerated books on, on Myon program. So it, it was our first initial year. We're really hoping to kick it up. I foresee more students participating right now because our K through eight students are in summer school right now. And so um, we've asked every single one of them to participate as part of the Brahma readings, uh, summer series because they're in summer school anyway. And we wanna be able to celebrate the work that they're doing.
Is this K through eight oriented or is it K through twelve?
K through eight. So part of the work that we're doing with um, TNTP through to RSSP grant. Um, they are sharing some research that their program is conducting. And so they really wanted us to add some of this information in our board presentation. So what this graph is showing is, it's showing that students who access grade level work tend to accelerate their instruction rather than those who are remediated instruction. And so if we expect grade level work and grade level instruction from students, we will get it. If we continuously remediate, um, we tend to keep kids, students where they are and not on grade level. So the next slide is another example. Uh, when students access more of the key resources, and what are the key resources? The key resources are grade level content, strong instruction, deep engagement and high teacher expectations. And so when students have those key resources, they grow compared to their peers. So here's another example of what that might look like. And again, this is despite um, color, race and so forth. Here's another grant that addresses um, learning acceleration approaches. Classes receiving learning acceleration have more success this year and made it farther in this year's grade curriculum. So if you look at that graph, and I wish actually the graph was bigger and there were less words. Um, but again, this is one of the um, um, slides that we received from them. If you look at the graph, you'll see on the far left, it says less struggle. And then on the upper portion of the graph, it says more struggle. So students who were continuously remediated um, struggled more. They tended to stay where they were. But students who received acceleration tended to have less struggle. So classes receiving learning acceleration completed twenty-seven percent more grade level lesson than remediated classrooms. And I'm going to show you an example of, of definition in a minute regarding the difference between um, remediation and acceleration. And this is why it's key to our work this year. So this is an example of remediation and acceleration. So if there's a fourth grade student and they're coming to school at the beginning of the year and they are behind. The traditional sense is to remediate them so that they can access regular curriculum. But what happens is you remediate, you remediate, you mediate, and you never say, oh, they've never mastered it, so we can't go on. But in the second example, they show an example of acceleration where the student comes in and they may not be on grade level. But we offer them grade level instruction. They access grade level instruction and assignments. And then where you see the orange pieces, that's where we scaffold that learning. If there's a gap there, then we'll scaffold, we'll spiral. But we're not going to stop teaching a grade level instruction to remediate. We're gonna scaffold those pieces in. And then where you see the three X, that's an example on the bottom of, if we're looking at high priorities, was, is that standard important to the scaffolding? Okay, so we're not gonna attack every single T. We're gonna scaffold those that they need to access grade level instructions. So based on the decision to focus on updating our current curriculum to align to key components of literacy, we are able to focus on foundational learning strategies for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So the pathway that we selected, you see there's four pathways there. The pathway that we selected for our work with RSSP this year was updating our curriculum to align to high quality criteria, high quality instructional material criteria. So we have really dived into our reading program. We have aligned and ensured that our curriculum writers knew what we were looking at, our high priorities. We ensured that they understand the difference between acceleration and why it's important to access grade level curriculum and what it looks like to scaffold that. And so they are um, writing curriculum based on that information. So for our summer setup is we've involved our instructional leaders and te, uh, teachers trained, really just our key teachers right now on the components of effective instruction. We are utilizing the high quality instructional materials, which is our state adopted wonders program to deliver grade level appropriate tier one instruction with intentionality to ensure all are um, following through. We're developing systems to collect and analyze and respond to um, supporting teachers and in delivering effective instruction. And um, looking at student data to drive instruction and teacher support. And we plan to implement universal and targeted strategies. In the implementation and monitor progress through improvement cycles, we're going to determine the key levers we've reused to support teachers. We have determined those would be lesson planning and providing observation feedback. Observation coaching cycles to our principals and our teachers. And really looking at our data cycles to collect review and utilize trends in instructional data. And ensuring that our PLCs and our professional development is all focused around this work. Accelerated learning versus remediation. Remediation often focuses on drilling students. I think we're most familiar with that terminology. On isolated skills um, that do not necessarily address grade level curriculum. Activities connect to standards from years ago. Accelerated learning, on the other hand, strategically prepares students for success in current grade level content. It ready students for new learning and past concepts and skills are addressed, but always purposeful in a scaffolding or spiraling just-in-time supports. So our work with the Resilience School um, Support Program this year will um, accelerate learning in supportive learning environments reflected in improved assessment outcomes. And that's all part of our work with um, curriculum writing that we're bringing teachers and will continue to do. So that's where we currently are. Where we're going we're going is we addressed five commitments that, that we will focus our work on this year. Number one, we are going to ask, we've asked students and families directly about their goals and school experiences. We didn't want to um, create another survey at the end of the year. We had already developed the ESR survey. And the ESR survey was really good in addressing um, instructional gaps and social emotional learning. Um, so we use that survey. And I'm going to show you some data from that survey in a minute. We're going to make greater access to grade appropriate assignments. We're really going to be looking at grade level instruction and grade level assignments. And evaluating um, the student work to determine the alignment. and evaluating, um, the student work to determine the alignment to the TEES. Number three, we're going to give all students, especially those who are behind grade level access to instruction that asks them to think and engage deeply in challenging material. That's going to be done really through ensuring that grade level curriculum is taught and assignments are on a grade level. And we're going to ensure educators enact high expectations for student success by seeing firsthand that students are capable of succeeding with more rigorous, rigorous material. And five, we're going to conduct an equity audit to identify school and district level decisions that give students greater access than others to key resources. What you see on the right-hand side is our, the RSSP supports and that they will be providing through this work. So, um, the first graph you see, it says, um, this question was asked in the ESAR survey. Please select the most important academic setting that you consider vital to addressing learning loss. Acceleration built into the school day was a popular one for parent and community feedback from the ESAR grant. So, um, we're looking at building our schedules that address acceleration in the school day, but we know that that's not the only avenue. We are going to have to obviously provide and we want to provide after-school tutoring as well as maybe some Saturday camps and instructional time in that during that time.
What's the base number for this survey? Is it a hundred people?
No, no, they responded as it was over. It was like two eighty-six or something.
So it's in two sixty, two eighty each?
Yeah.
Okay.
The next one asked for, wanted them to rank one most important to five least important. Um, and high quality instructional learning materials um, stood out as number one and number two, student academic support to recover learning loss. And again, this was a parent and community feedback from the ESAR survey. Due to the pandemic, the next slide, my child student has spent more time at home and might need social emotional support now upon return to school. Um, forty-one point fifty-six percent agree, strongly agree, and thirty-three, so a total of about almost seventy-five percent there agreeing um, through the parent community feedback from the ESAR survey. This was teacher feedback on the ESAR survey, which was very interesting. The topic was foundational, ensure that all students have access to high quality instructional materials, are teachers adequately trained on those materials. And so on a scale of zero to four, the majority of the teachers said no, and, um, the next was somewhat. And I think we heard this over and over again last year that they hadn't been provided with professional development. They were given resources, but they were having to figure out how to use them. And so, um, we, we, we heard them and what we heard, they, they responded on the survey as well. The next slide is also teacher feedback foundational, ensure that all students have access to high quality instructional materials. Are those materials currently implemented with fidelity? Um, obviously, if you haven't been trained on materials, teachers aren't going to, um, provide instruction with fidelity on the materials. They're probably going to reach for what they know. Um, and so their responses here were very similar. And, and very consistent with what we, we would say.
Yes.
Absolutely. I'm sorry? Responding to the survey? Uh, Dr. Sondal, do you remember how many teachers specifically responded to the survey?
No, I can tell you.
Okay. I do know, uh, I do remember thinking we had a pretty good percentage of teachers respond to the survey, but I can't. Uh, but we can get you that number. Stakeholders' survey results in support of instruction. Um, this was also teacher responses. Um, it asked, what do you think the top priority should be for next year? And they focused also on social emotional learning, um, as the parents did. And the next was continue to align the curriculum. So in those surveys, um, what I presented initially and the direction of the work with RSSP, we've really responded to the surveys and the need and the direction that we will be going in this year. So how will we get there? Again, we're going to focus on, uh, English Language Arts in third and sixth grade. We have chosen to focus in our state adoption wonders and really, um, provide, um, professional development systems and structures for teachers and ensuring that our students have access to that grade level instruction. We've chosen pathway two, um, which is aligning our curriculum to our tier one instruction based, uh, state adopted materials. Um, we're focusing on the foundation of tier one instruction to ensure all students are receiving tier one instruction. And we'll be addressing just-in-time supports, which were those little scaffolding arrows that you, that, um, I showed you um, when needed for prerequisite skills. We will train teachers and leaders on the key components of effective RLA instruction as part of our district-wide professional development, planning and implementation of just-in-time supports, and data-driven practices to support learning and acceleration. The next slide really just shows, um, this is coming from, um, the Texas Education Agency on what foundational strategies are for learning acceleration. And so if you take a look at that, you pretty much check off some of the, most of the things that we are implementing. Now, when it comes to the universal strategies or targeted strategies, they ask that we focus on just one because it could be too much information um, for teachers, um, in a given year. And so we focused on, we're focusing on just-in-time intervention. So our theory of action is based on accelerating learning through consistent access to grade appropriate instruction and task. Our teachers and our leaders are going to hear that over and over and over again. If we provide students with grade appropriate assignments and instruction, then we will accelerate student learning as measured by grade appropriate assignments, looking at student work, grade appropriate instruction, looking at teacher delivery instructional practices as they align to the Texas essential knowledge and skills, and accelerated student learning outcomes based on the assessment data that we are receiving. The school year arc of learning acceleration, we have, um, three progress monitoring periods or cycles, if you will. So cycle one, um, focuses on instruction that prioritizes essential knowledge and skills implemented with fidelity to, and align to select key components of effective instruction, which is our wonders program. And then student mastery data is regularly reviewed to determine next steps. You see what our cycle two focus and our cycle three focuses will be there. They do repeat and then we build upon them. So what might cycle one look like as an example? On the next slide, our cycle one goal is that in the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, we will close achievement gaps created by COVID nineteen pandemic through a learning acceleration plan that prioritizes on grade level tier instruction. That is the overall, that's not the cycle one goal. I mistakenly said that. That is our overall vision. We're going to focus on internalizing the RLA and wonders program during this first cycle between August sixteenth and October the eighth. We're going to attend, um, cohort learning coach, uh, sessions, coaching teachers and leaders on RLA implementation of our wonders program and attend CRIMZI learning series. Um, what CRIMZI is, is it provides us, they come through TA and it provides us with effective strategies for instructional delivery and materials. And then our TNT support organization is going to, we meet with them every other week consistently from nine to ten AM. And we do team check-ins, PD on key components and use their tools um, and support with progress monitoring. They're a really good partner, um, to the strategic planning uh, of the work that we are going to do this year. So that concludes, I believe, my presentation, um, for the work that we've done with RSSP in year one and where we're going in year two. And we're really very excited about this coming year and getting all of our children back. Dr. Sondal?
The number of, we had for, of people that could do the survey was two hundred forty-three total. And the number of teachers that actually could do the survey was fifty-eight. There were a total of twenty-two point eight percent of the people that responded.
About a quarter.
Two hundred teachers.
About a quarter of our teachers. I can tell you though, through our curriculum writing, we have had very, high school is, um, participating in curriculum writing this week. And we have had very positive feedback. We are also going to use our curriculum writers um, to assist us with providing professional development because if it comes from them and the work that they put into it, um, we feel that it'll help build that collegiality we need to move into this year with their colleagues. And we're, we're going to be very clear also when we roll this out with the entire staff is that we need to appreciate the fact that the teachers who participated in curriculum writing, we need to respect the work that they did and the fact that they are following what we're rolling out. And when it is rolled out, the expectation is this is what we're doing. And it is on all, on all campuses. And if there's a concern about it, then address it correctly and respectfully. However, everybody had the chance to work and get paid extra. We paid extra for extra hours, et cetera. Um, and we really wanted the teacher voice. So, so, um, we appreciate the ones that did dedicate themselves. There were some levels that we were really having to really get them to come, pay them to come and be a part of it. And I'm hoping that after they see the success of what the curriculum writers have done this summer, then they're going to say, okay, that wasn't so bad, you know, and hopefully do it next year. But actually throughout the year, there's going to be times when they're going to, well, actually every nine weeks. Every before, every nine week period will have a curriculum writing opportunity for the upcoming nine week period. Right. And so then if others want to join, then they can join at that point and just keep going. But we're going to need to create that climate of everybody has to buy into what we're doing, otherwise it's not going to work. It'll be inconsistent. And the same thing when like when you were asking about the read summer reading series, you know, and even the site words that we, we posted and, and I'm going to continue my robocalls even more so, they'll, they'll start coming up again more um, to remind parents, because those are easy things that, you know, all, everybody can do to say, let's, let's look at your site words, you know, it's just a list and you have it right there. And challenge the kids, you know, well, we even posted the second grade list and third grade list, even though you're first grader, why not? Try learning some of those other words. Those are easy, they're quick, you can do them. You can post them on your refrigerator, you can post them on the wall, you can post them wherever. Um, just some things that we really need to get all parents, so any parents that you know, ask them, perhaps because your child downloaded it come get a hard copy from our campuses or from our district, you know, central office. The summer reading series, the same thing, you know, we have the information on our website, we're posting it, we're sending it, we're robocalling it. Uh, just kind of, you know, help, if, if we can all rise to that, it's going to make a huge difference. But I mean, we started small, but we're hoping to continue.
Yes, exactly. I was going to say, Dr. It's a small number, but it's something that, that has not probably happened. And this is a good start. And you got to get our, you, we got to get our teachers, uh, side of the body. Good job.
And my biggest thing is to get me on the board for going like forty years. We've, I finally heard the word, I got kind of some goosebumps is that the alignment would probably be there. You know, that's something we've been fighting for many years. So to hear that is really, really a, a grand prize. But I think most importantly is that we gave our teachers and our campus leaders, which again, it's their campus, the autonomy to write curriculum, say, okay, look, it's yours, you own it. Let's get it done. It's going to be you. So kudos to the administration team for allowing that, but most importantly, the campus leadership along with the teachers that bought in and that are writing and continue to write. And hopefully we did more than want to write because I know at the end of the day, that's what it's all going to work out. Because now it's like, you own it. This is what you wanted. This is what works. It's getting done.
Very good.
Oliver.
Oh, we got to get rid of all three.
Oliver, yeah. Monitoring.
That would be the first nine weeks.
Progress monitoring.
Walkers and things like that.
Monitoring is extremely important. It'll be built into our walkers.
I ever had my curriculum checked.
And.
I've got a specific question back to the graph where you had this part of it. So here on RSSP, page twelve of, of our, um, and I understand what you're saying there in terms of we're going to have to do accelerated curriculum. And then we're going to spiral back in those specific TEES or whatever it is that, that students may be needing, but I, it's part of my problem is why not future? It, it kind of assumes that all the kids in that class would be deficient in the same TEES. Um, and it could be kind of a case by case basis. And I'm not opposed to this. I think very, very aggressive and I, I agree with you one hundred percent that the pushing and challenging, adding the rigor to the curriculum is what we have added fast. But looking at this and having gone to a nine-week system, September, October, November, you're going to have the end of the first nine weeks or whatever. On that blue graph with the, with these built back in of a couple of those, I suspect you're going to have a huge, high level of frustration from students, parents, and teachers on all of those areas because the teachers are going to be pushing. Kids, certainly part of them aren't going to be getting it. And so I expect we're going to be receiving the phone calls and, and, you know, what's going on and all of this. We, we came down with some pretty stringent grade standards too, a couple of months ago. And so this is going to have to be constant monitoring and, and again, all the more important that the teachers understand that, that this is, you know, I, I, I have to go for you. Y'all are going to have a rough.
And, and Mr. Capel, not just, um, constant monitoring, but the support piece has to lie there.
Right.
Um, we, we're setting the bar high. The expectation is here. I'm not sure we're setting, I mean, yes, we are setting the bar high, but this is, we're talking about grade level curriculum. And we have to start with grade level curriculum. Otherwise we'll be remediating all your. The key piece, and I hear what you're saying is not just the monitoring, but yes, our, the support has to be there from the team as well.
Communication, communication, communication.
And so it's not just a, well, here it is, do, but let me show you or let me support you in the work. Um, because we, we, we really are needing to address grade level work, grade level assignments to get where we need to be. And for the scaffolding and the supports that don't work for our students that you're talking about that might be, um, struggling, that's what our tutoring program is for. And that's what, you know, to provide some more of the scaffolding support so that they are ready for grade level curriculum.
To keep Dr. Pettis standing. This is a long and winding road. This is it.
I like that Beatles song. We brought it to the longer winding road. Sometimes my, my launch from the leadership has, has, um, our principal leaders have heard me say this, but this is a year of, I, I started using it at the end of last year was one district, one destiny. Because we really have to be all just charging down the same road in the same direction to, um, be able to do what's right for our students. Our CNI team, I have to commend them. They're going to work it super hard late at night, Sundays calling me.
Couple points, I'm sorry. On the chart that's up there though, it's making the assumption that we're only looking at three going to four. I think we've got kids that are more than one year behind. So would they be two going into four?
And that's where the extra is going to have to come from.
Yes, um, yes. What Colonel Wright is saying is that this, this chart is showing that student might be one grade level behind. And so we are, um, teaching to one we were remediating in the grade level prior. But yes, we could definitely have students that may be two grade levels below.
At one point in time, and I know this is, what's the word I'm looking for? Last in the education world, but I recall Cardinals, Bluebirds, and Reds.
We don't want to go back.
Well, we may not want to go back there, but the practicality of that was is that it's hard to run a three-ring circus. And when you're doing that, you know, what are the four Vs doing when we're, when we're trying to bring the three Ws up or the two Ws? And I don't want to be tracking. I know that you can't say that, but at some point in time, I think you have to be realistic and say, it's not fair to the kid who's two years behind or almost a whole year behind to throw him into the deep end of the pool and say, swim, no matter how much extra lessons you give him. I, I think that's going to be the tricky part.
It is.
It's, it's asking the teacher to teach to a spectrum of this as opposed to a spectrum of this, where if they could split that up a little bit, most of my kids are here. Most of my kids are here. Most of my kids are here. Yes, it's Cardinals, Redbirds, and Bluebirds again, but.
you see what I'm saying?
I do, I do see what you're saying.
To do more or short shrift what they really want to do because they've got half their class over here and half their class over there.
It is.
It's hard to do.
Yes, it is hard to do and differentiate curriculum. Everything I just presented to you and what's expected of the teachers along with differentiated curriculum and, and how we use our students in our class. Because when we have heterogeneous groups, um, our students learn from each other. You know, if we keep them in Blue Birds or Red Birds or then, then they, they'd only learn what they have in front of them, but heterogeneous helps them to spread out. So what I was going to say is, everything that I just presented to you, um, if we were using the T test evaluation system effectively, it addresses every single thing we just said. It talks about grade level uh, work. It talks about differentiated instruction. It talks about following the district curriculum and talks about, so there are several, it um, T test is, is a really good evaluation tool that aligns to the work that we need to be doing to those students.
Or if there's something that sabotaged that, it would be those kids that are more than a grade level behind that didn't get the tape. Probably would have been the right answer.
I think that's why it's so important that we provide tools to our teachers as well. For example, one of the things that was in the S R grant is, um, I believe, achieve three thousand. And that's one of the programs that we've looked at that, that I've used before where, um, he, the same class, we could all be reading about sharks. The same article, but my article might be written in a third grade level and Ms. Reynolds's may be written in a tenth grade level. And we can still, you wouldn't know that I had a third grade level one and you wouldn't, and I wouldn't know that you had a tenth grade level one. But the discussions, yeah, critical thinking all there would still be there and I could learn from the, like, we're a heterogeneous group right here. You know, um, I don't know as much about, you know, the military as you do. And so I learned from it.
Which is a nice way of calling me a red.
But anyway, you get what I mean. Thank you.
Do you have any people, you know, you observe fighters? And I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to this next step is that you go back and have observation, this is observation teachers to make sure that they're teaching correctly.
Yes, it, it is, it is the reason for, um, you know, the evaluation process is a year-long process. It's not a forty-five minute period. And so, um, when the principals do the walkthroughs and we will be doing walkthroughs with them to gauge or without them sometimes, um, to gauge instructional practices, to have those conversations and then to support um, the work that is happening in the classroom and also to celebrate the work that is happening in the classroom. Yes.
These, these, the fact that they're using this, this system is going to be documented, correct? That's.
That's what we're managing. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are, are you guys pulling guests as well for those who may be more spreadable maybe?
So. We're going to have tutors in the classrooms as well, but one thing the state has told us about the hospital, uh, four by four by is they don't really want them being pulled out. So, um, there's certain. We really need more of a push-in program. I think that works better than a pull-out program. We also need to look at where students are being serviced. Some students can be serviced with tutors, but some students should be serviced with their teachers. That certified teacher who knows where they are. And those are, are, are two grade levels below, you know, are one grade levels below. Um, really our certified teachers should be working with those students rather than tutors pulling them out. So we'll be looking at various strategies and scenarios to be able to support those students.
The tutor can be working with the kids that are already on grade level, going, moving forward and continuing while the teacher, like what she's talking about can work with this. But it's just a variety that depends on what.
Yes, we are. Um, we will be posting those soon. We're doing them the day before school starts, our Friday before school starts. I believe elementary is from three to four meet the teacher, middle school is from four to five meet the teacher and high school is from five to six meet the teacher.
For the first time, we're meeting with all the principals tomorrow, so we're going to roll all the calendar out about that.
So now you guys are rich or nightly curriculum, is there a syllabus that you can hand out to the parents? It's not just a syllabus where you learn and the next five weeks or is it surprise?
Well, it's, uh, right now, it's, it's in the form of Y E P year and the lands. And so we'll have to look at, um, what we can do to try and provide something on that.
Okay, so if, if my kid will have issues, that would be a huge help for me to help my, my teacher.
And we can help the Y E P with the clickable links to the teach so you know exactly what it is that you're supposed to be learning. That's very doable. Yeah, we can, we can make that happen.
Boring style.